Good evening, like to welcome everyone to the McIntosh County Board of Education's work sessions for May sixth, twenty twenty four. If you would please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we do thank you for this day. We ask your continued blessings on the school system. We ask your blessings on this board as we continue to work through the system and work on our bu- our budgets for next year. And we ask your continued blessings on the children and their education. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, citizens addressed to board. No one. Item four is approval of our work session agenda. Could I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. McIver, second.
Second.
Mr. Hewlett, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries five zero. Alright, Dr. Williams, I'll turn it over to you.
Alright, well, under student success, I will not read all of those out loud to you. I think I have sent you even calendar invites for most of them. It's so you know when all the different ceremonies are. Honors days, honors nights, awards days, excuse me, baccalaureate graduation. We ha- we do have a college and career signing day next Friday. And then Cat Swiddle, you have your invitation in front of you that will be here next Monday night.
Is there any talk of changing graduation back to seven o'clock? Or am I stepping on some toes or community toes?
I have not heard anything about that, have you?
Nobody's mentioned it to me. If it's something we want to explore next year, we could definitely do that.
You know, some of the parents come up and say, well, by the time we get out of there, all the restaurants are closed, you know?
We can look at that.
Yeah, but we, we used to do it at seven, didn't we?
Yes. Is there a re- I mean, do y'all know why it went to eight o'clock?
Think they're wet on sunset.
Cause it was outside and they wanted to be a little cooler.
Yeah.
That and then the fireworks, I think.
Okay.
Okay, just thought.
Hey, remind me of that again in August.
Okay.
No, I'm just. I'll write it down.
Yeah, cause I don't know when they order the invitations.
They don't or- they don't order those until later, but it's something we need to decide. Like in, in August of this year, I want us to try to have a calendar for the whole year done with everything. That's my plan.
Okay. That's all I have under go one.
Alright, under B is our board roles and responsibilities. I think I emailed them to everyone just to review. And we will put this on here, Ms. Lane, if we will, next week for a vote because I'll need to add the date to our application. Thank you. If y'all have any feedback, please let me know so I can make those changes. But y'all let me know by Thursday, that'll give me time.
Yes, ma'am.
Good thing.
Thank you. Y'all been thinking about it. Alright, Ms. Tammy, tentative budget.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I think we have a document there, the consolidated, yes, the consolidated budget. So after our budget retreat, this is the unchanged consolidated budget that we looked at during our retreat. So I'd just like to ask the board that in the next, the regular business meeting, to adopt this tentative budget so that we can put it in the paper in time for the, the public hearing scheduled for the work session meeting June the third and for the final adoption of the regular business meeting on June the tenth. And if there are any questions over it, I won't bore you all with the details again, but if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
And Ms. Kathleen has said that the week prior to it, to the June third, she will put an article in the paper about the budget. So Tammy and I are gonna put her together something for that as well.
Alright. Thank you, Ms. Tammy. Alright, and then our minutes from our previous meetings, please look over those and let Dr. Williams or Ms. Lane know if you have any issues with those. And then Ms. Tammy again. Our financial reports.
Alright, April thirtieth, twenty twenty four financial report, the general operating account on page one. We began the month with three point seven million. We had receipts of one point nine million. In those receipts, we included three hundred and ninety seven thousand in transfers from the local project. And that's for the local portion of the six buses that we purchased. They all came in during the month of April and they are all paid for and we are awaiting the state, the state revenue to come down for that. Expenditures, we had two point five million. Again, that included the five hundred and whatever it was, thousand dollars for the, for the buses out of the general operating account. General fund revenues, page twenty four. School year is eighty three point three three percent complete. General fund revenues are at fifteen point six seven million, which is eighty five point nine nine percent of our budget at eighteen point two million dollars. Just want to update on the add-to-law on tax, period to date through April, we have received ninety percent of the net levy.
Ms. Tammy, just if you can go back a couple of pages. Is it possible here, you know, when we do the disbursements? You, you told us what, but are, are these all the listings of what the disbursements are?
There's another page in your report that has, that lists all the checks and what they're for. And then there's another section that has a little bit more description on each expenditure. So if you review that, if you have any specific questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you.
Okay, back to expenditures on page twenty seven. Period to date expenditures of twelve point nine million. That is sixty nine percent of our budget at eighteen point seven million in general fund expenditures. Changes in budget equity, page thirty two, current general fund equity on April the thirtieth is six point six seven million. Okay, on to school nutrition, page eighty one. School nutrition account has three hundred and fifty two thousand eight hundred and sixty three dollars. School nutrition fund balance on page eighty nine, three hundred and sixty four thousand nine hundred and twenty one dollars. Local projects, page ninety three. Begin the month with one point six million. Four hundred dollars in interest. We had transfers out to the general fund for the three hundred and ninety seven thousand for the local portion of the buses. Money market account, page ninety five. Begin the month with four million seventy thousand dollars. Interest for the month was ten thousand forty eight dollars.
Wow.
Leaving us with four hundred and eighty dollars.
I need one of these accounts, that's what I see.
And finally, debt service on page ninety seven. We had interest in the jointed one fund for the month of April of seventeen thousand one hundred and seventy seven dollars. We had East Bloss receipts of a hundred and seventy six thousand five hundred and eighty dollars.
Wow.
Which was a four percent increase over April of last year. Just want to point out on that last page, page ninety eight, the history of the East Bloss receipts. We are currently at just over eight million dollars with like three months left to go. The maximum we can have is eight point five million, so we're gonna be cutting that really close. That's all I have, are there any questions?
We don't have any. Everybody good? Okay, alright, number five is our ratification of our field trip for state track meet. We can vote on that next week since we already.
The date did change. I think the original date was Friday and Saturday, the third and fourth, and they changed it because there was inclement weather in Carrollton. So it went, it was Thursday and Friday that they actually went up.
Okay. Alright, Mr. Boone.
Technology purchases, so is that time of year where it is time to do our Chromebook replacement? So one of the things that we've been talking about the last couple of years, especially when we had COVID first started and we went to one to one, is our Chromebook replacement cycle. We bought all new Chromebooks in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. So we're now at a point where we've got to start buying some every single year to get on a cycle. So we don't end up having to buy everybody Chromebooks at one time. Because Chromebooks do have what they call a update end date. And the moment we hit that date, we're no longer allowed to test on them for state regulation. So starting this year allows us to get them all in a cycle before we start expiring our Chromebooks. That means this year we would be replacing four hundred and seventy five student devices. And our plan is every year to replace kindergarten, third grade, sixth grade, and ninth grade. And that will keep us on a rotational cycle of if we replace those grade levels every year, that gives a, a brand new Chromebook to say the kindergartner. And then they will roll that Chromebook every year until they're in second grade. Then the fourth year, our plan is to have that as the spares for kindergarten first and second grade. And then do the same thing for third, fourth, and fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth. And then ninth through twelfth grade, they would keep theirs through the whole thing. And then we would use the spares that come from the other schools to keep that school with some spares as well. We got this planned from another school district and they said it's working well for us. We don't have to keep a lot of surplus new technology on the shelves. Cause a lot of times in the past, we've had to order a certain percentage of, of extra Chromebooks. And we're not really gonna have to do that now if we can put them on a decent. The schools are liking that plan too, because right now we're having to move Chromebooks every summer from one school to the next, to the next. And that's really become burdensome and it's causing just an additional layer of things that have to be done and logistically moving things in and out of order from one school to the other. So that does have, if you look at these quotes, the, and the elementary school has requested touchscreens for the kindergartners. So the kindergartners, this would be the first year, those would roll up the kindergarten first, second. So those lower levels would have a touchscreen device that it will help with some of the activities that they do. And it wasn't a whole lot more in cost, but we didn't want to spread that cost to everyone because touchscreens aren't necessary in third grade and up. So this would be, this first quote is our teacher devices. It is time to replace all of our teacher Chromebooks. And our plan on that is to remove teacher desktops from classrooms and their Chromebook will be their primary device. We're gonna put a document station monitor, I'm not sure if you guys have seen what we've done for our administrative staff. They have a document station monitor in their laptop that lets them take it with them. If they bring it back, they plug it in, they have a real mouse and keyboard and a monitor. So this is buying all teacher Chromebooks across the district to remove all the current desktops in classrooms. Because all of the current desktops, I believe our newest ones are twenty nineteen, I believe, which puts them at the five-year mark where we're ready to replace. And then we do have twenty seventeens and eighteens still in places in a couple areas. But this would phase out all teacher desktops, bring all staff into the same device across the district with the same monitor across the district.
Talk about why we want to do Chromebooks, not desktops, just a minute.
So part of it goes into our cyber security plan long term. Chromebooks are not subject to the same type of viruses and intrusion issues that we have with Windows devices. And our plan is, you know, so if we do get the compromises we talked about during some of our cybersecurity sessions, we can treat Chromebooks differently. We, we may be able to put them in what I call an isolated environment and not shut down Chromebooks, but for a day instead of multiple days if we end up in a cyber incident. They just do not have the same vulnerabilities and the same issues that Windows computers do. So if we do have a cyber incident in the board office, because we do run everything on Windows devices, because of the nature of the jobs we do, we could be shut down for four or five days, but we may not have to shut the school down that long if we have them on devices that aren't subject to the same type of cybersecurity issues. I've talked to several other school districts doing this. They said the first year is rough, some teachers love it, some teachers hate it. We've been putting out feelers, I've talked to several teachers, I've got a test device, we're gonna put it in the buildings tomorrow. A few days at each school for teachers to look at it, and I've already started writing up with some plans. We know some teachers are gonna absolutely love it, they said they're excited, they can't wait. We've got other teachers that are, don't change my craft. So I do think that part's gonna get a little interesting.
Buy me a phone.
But we have multiple reasons to do it too. I, I'm very much on sustainability. Right now, our teachers do have a Chromebook and they have a desktop and we have the computer on their interactive panel. And that's not sustainable long term. So I feel like going to a nicer Chromebook, getting rid of their desktop, we keep our interactive panels as they are and then we move to the laptop and we're supporting two devices, not three. It's long-term to save all money, yes, ma'am.
How much time are kindergartners spending on these devices?
I don't know the answer to that. I know they use them and they asked for us to put them in carts so they'll be assigned to the student in the cart. And that's why we didn't do prepay because I didn't see the utilization.
Cause I would, I mean, I don't know what, I haven't been in the rooms to see what.
Sandra, do you know?
Well, yes. They use them during small reading time. Do, that's one of their rotation stations. So they don't spend many minutes, be, a lot of time on them, but they, they can use them.
So they're beneficial for the kindergartners or?
I would say so.
Okay.
They're more beneficial than, you know, they're, they're little.
Okay, I was just curious.
I asked the same question. Yeah, and like I said, I did ask the same question, do we really need to account for a single Chromebook for all kindergarten levels? And when they started explaining, hey, yeah, we do use them and things, I, I don't, I don't want them to have to go back to a scenario where we were before, where they were having to borrow carts from other grade levels because we had been in that scenario and it got very messy and it got broken. And then it costs us more money on the other side of the house to keep them maintained.
Now, do they take those home as well, the kindergartners?
Kindergarten first and second, didn't offer their Chromebooks home. We do assign it to the student now, we started doing this last year and it actually caused our breakage to go down. So if I go in, if I'm in kindergarten, Rusty's device is assigned to Rusty, it goes into a certain slot in the cart. And Rusty only uses Rusty's device. So then when they go to first grade, Rusty's device moves to this, that marked, into whoever's class he's in. And that seems to be making the breakage rate go down because even at a little age, they know if, if I break my Chromebook, I've broken my Chromebook. If I write on my Chromebook, I'm writing on my Chromebook. So that has made a difference doing it that way, putting carts. I wrote on these because we were still evaluating some of the extended warranty options. So I did not have the bike speed, go back and change the code again to include that. So this number right here does include if we were to do the four-year accidental damage protection warranty on, they just have Chromebooks on this one. If we look at the two quotes for the students, this would include the three-year, we could, I don't want to pay extra for the four-year. But we're evaluating what all is included in those warranties before I ask for another quote modification to actually include that. We're getting some additional information, but I did want you guys to see it because that would be the maximum number we spend if we do go that route. Funding wise, Ms. Tammy and I discussed it, she's got some extra money that she'd like to use up. So we're gonna, and we, we did have most of this in special projects. We're gonna move it into extra money and leave the special projects money alone. So most of this will be funded out of special project with the exception of the cases that we got our Chromebooks. We learned a valuable last, a lesson during cross-functional monitoring, don't put cases with federal money because then they will too far go to them.
Ooh.
Was not something that Ms. Noble, myself, or T N E thought was very practical.
Oh, my goodness.
Twenty dollar items you don't want to borrow, go to pay. That comes back to be a management nightmare for all parties involved. But that, we will still have to go back and buy cases, but that's part of the special projects budget. I know there's a lot on that line. I don't know if you guys have any questions, because I do have one other thing on the surplus side related to Chromebooks. Alright, so we also put on here technology surplus. So part of the same plan, the model district that had the kindergarten first, sixth grade, what they did, and I'm fifty fifty on this, I talked to Dr. Williams about it and I talked to Ms. Noble about it. Then the seniors, when a senior graduates, if the device is still a viable device, the schools would offer for the seniors to be able to take it home, which requires us to surplus devices at that, because then we'll be going into the fifth year. We would be taking them out of production anyway because they will be past our usable dates as far as Chromebook goes. And I just wanted to discuss with you guys, what do you guys think about doing that? Devices in the schools when they get the fifth year and they no longer have them in their production, they would offer those up for sale to their parents. So if a parent needed a device to have at home, sell the device for fifty dollars or twenty dollars or whatever we can determine the value is of the device. And I thought it was a decent plan, but I wanted to bring it to you guys before we explore that too far because I know we might have to change a couple of things in our procedures. Just thoughts and.
So you're saying sell them?
Mm-mm, see, not to the students.
Seniors, we would give it to them.
Gotcha.
When they graduate, that would come their device.
Right.
They would delete it out of our system and it would do an automatic, what we call a refresh. And it would pop up and say, well, it is your personal account. And we would do that on the last day of school or whatever their last day is because they have senior week. If we go that route, we would not sell them to seniors because.
Right.
They're in their fifth year, five.
They already had that device for four years. And I thought it would be a, a, a pretty nice gesture of, especially with the devices we have. I think they had at least one more year of updates after we would take them out of our production network. So it's still a viable device if they want to use it. And I just thought it would be a nice gesture, other school systems are doing it, they're doing it very successfully. Some students take them up on it and some say, nope, I don't want it. And the school.
Just takes it.
Surpluses it as part of their stuff, uses it for parks or sells it to somebody that wants it for parks. And then the other devices that we would decommission out of the middle school and elementary school would be ones that we could sell to parents. Because those students already have the device, we wouldn't want to be selling to students. But if a parent said, I'd like to have something to play on the internet on, we could do the same thing, we'd do, we'll refresh others. That takes all of our information off of it and then a parent can login using their email address. But I wanted y'all's feedback on that because that's, that's a significant change to the way we do some of that stuff right now. But I think there's a lot of pros and cons to it, so I'd rather drop the way you just said, let's discuss this turn.
I think it beats sitting in a room.
Yeah, what are we, what are we doing now?
Well, the, the last time we bought them out, we were able to use them for parks and some of the newer ones, but the ones we have now, they're not gonna be able to do that with. So they would either sit on a shelf or we would sell them to a surplus company and get five dollars a piece for them, maybe ten. I'm much more, would rather see that in the student's hands as being graduating or a parent having the ability to use that as their internet device at home. And say, oh, you don't have a Chromebook for ten bucks, here you go, now you can go look at your titty grade. That's part of being parent engagement side of the house too. So I've been throwing out some ideas in my head on ways we can do that. You know, if a parent says, I just flat don't have a device, well, now you do.
But if, item here, if I may. The, the hurdle with that is generally speaking, the gratuities clause of the constitution does not let governments give anything away. And we just can't do it. You know, I, I mean, maybe sell it for a dollar or something, I don't know. But I mean, generally speaking, we're not allowed to do that. I mean, we can't, you know, we can't give money to anything, we're just not allowed to. And I, I, I see the, you know, I see the reasoning behind that too. This is public to begin with. I also see the reasoning, what Rusty said, I think it's a wonderful idea. And at that point, they probably have no value. I mean, really probably depreciated out.
To surplus.
So, you know, boards of education do have a lot more latitude and surplus property than cities and counties do. So I think it's definitely something to look at. I, I'd like to check Rusty with the other districts and whatever they implemented and see how they're getting around it. I mean, even if it's a, hey, dollar, you know?
And I'll try to find the specific district.
Yeah.
One in Florida that was doing it.
Yeah, well, they wouldn't have our constitutional problem there.
Yeah, and it may not be, but I know it was one, a specific one in Florida, when they laid out their entire plan, we were at a conference. And it was like, wow, that is a great plan. So that's when we brought it back here and started talking about it. And even with the seniors, if you did the dollar buyout.
Yeah.
I would bet most of the seniors would find a dollar, keep their Chromebook.
Yeah, I bet they would.
If you did a dollar buyout.
One buck.
One buck.
One buck.
There you go. I like that.
And just throwing this out there, it, it would not surprise me if there were a possible private entity that paid that dollar for all the seniors.
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
And so it was still not, it was a buyout, but it wasn't something that the seniors actually had to do. Not to mention, they're already paying a Chromebook used fee every year.
So do you know if anybody in Georgia's doing that? You don't know if anybody in Georgia's doing that?
Don't know, but I can reach out and let's find out.
Just so we know.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out too.
Okay.
On my list.
That's a good idea, if they, if they paid up their used fees for how much they could.
Well, now, so.
There you go.
Do you know if that would count? So our students, every student has to pay that ten or twenty dollar a year technology use fee.
So they've paid it for four years.
Yeah, as long as we.
As a senior, the technology use fee covers the device going and then it.
Yeah, we've received some consideration, yeah. I think that probably could be used to satisfy that.
We'll check on that.
I mean, I, I love the idea, you know?
Well, and that's why I wanted to bring it to you guys to have a discussion and see if it's even something we can do. What you guys thought about it, because if we like the idea, we'll go back to this note, we'll make sure our paperwork looks right. We've got some things that I want to make sure are in process because we could start this year, this very last minute to do it, or we could do it this year.
Let us know, keep us out of jail, Richie. That's your job, keep us out of jail.
Oh, well, it's not jail, they, we just, you know.
Earn your money this way.
Take them back and all that stuff.
Exactly.
He's getting a paycheck this week.
That's right. Okay, was that all you had, Rusty?
That's all I have unless you guys have questions.
I don't. We'll wait on Richie to let us know. Okay, surplus buses, is that you, Mr. Mossen?
I tried to put all your stuff together. I missed getting all Tammy's together, I'm trying to group it by people.
She needed a rest for wasting that.
Well, we have a surplus bus list now due to the fact that we've had these new, six new buses. I'm really excited about it and we're asking for your permission to surplus them. They all have issues ranging from massive oil leaks to transmission problems to this, that, and the other. These aren't buses that we would rely on to use and are blessed that we don't have to keep pushing money into them to keep them on the road.
Okay.
So next week, we appreciate the option to surplus those.
We've gotten all the parts and everything else and we can use?
We will, absolutely.
Fires.
We gotta roll out of here, they gotta roll out of here.
Oh, no, we can tell.
Alright, so would you like to move on?
Yes, right, move on, please.
I'll be very short with this. I just wanted to update you on a few of the projects that we had approved at our budget retreat for this year. First of all, I just wanted to let you know that the painting of Oak Grove will begin. They're coming tomorrow to give us a, a list of exactly what paint we need. And hopefully by Thursday, the painting will begin. And the floor gentleman is on standby for as soon as the paint gets done, so hopefully we can wrap that up. We're having a little trouble with our roof contact for the band room because we haven't been able to get the paperwork needed to put them in the system. We're waiting on them, it's not us, but they're, they're ready as soon as we get that in. And I'm hoping tomorrow that we'll actually have a, a physical date or nail down a hard date for that. The PO has been submitted for the mower and it's been requested and they're in the process right now of adding the new reels to it and totally refurbishing it. I'm hoping in the next three or four weeks to have that mower here. Really good news on the lift, the lift that we proposed to you was a used lift. So we went to, to the company and asked them if they had it. And they told us they didn't have that lift anymore, but we were so blessed that they gave us a brand spanking new lift with a two-year warranty at the same exact price. So we have a brand new lift coming. Mr. Mason is scheduling to pick up for this week, so I'm really excited about that. That, you know, it was good and refurbished all, but brand new is a brand new with a warranty, so that, that, that's awesome. The AC in the auditorium, finally, I know we've been waiting patiently for that. It's scheduled for work to begin this week to actually replace that AC. And we'll be back up and running with ACs full, full on. The stage and the chairs, everything has been ordered and ready for graduation. The bleachers have been pressure washed, the field is coming along amazingly. So we are in really good position for our, our graduation on the field. It's gonna look amazing, it's gonna be another banner graduation. And the parking lot behind the transportation shop is. the parking lot behind the transportation shop is almost done. They've already, um, added all the crushed concrete or crushed asphalt in and it is, um, looking really good. And I was very, very happy with the size of it. Um, it was marked off. It looked one way, but when they actually pulled up all the grass and they actually laid it, it's a very, very nice addition that's going to, um, keep our new buses and our old buses safe and distance from each other and the ability to turn around and, and be a really nice addition to, to that field. And so I'm really excited about that. Any questions?
Um, I've got a question. The other day I saw one of our, uh, the smaller buses. Um, gassing up at Friendly. Do, and I assume, of course, it's unleaded. We don't have unleaded pump at the shop?
No, we only have a diesel one and we have partnered up with Friendly. And we do get a discount for using them and, and it's on the Friendly card. But, um, what it is, Ms. Hewlett, also is that we have to get gas a lot of times out of town. And we needed to have a card and have, um, a, a place, even though we don't always get to go to a Friendly, it, it allows us to go to other places. That they're pretty statewide, you know, there's a lot of Friendly's around. And, um, so our partnership with them plays a multipurpose role and we just don't have a gas tank.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't know that we didn't.
Yeah. Well, we have diesel and we have propane.
Okay.
Good?
Can we have any COVID?
At this time, there's no COVID, um, cases that were reported to us. I will say and be, um, transparent as I can that I need to send out an email to the, um, principals and just remind them that I need to be reported to, because honestly, there was rumors and hints and allegations of one, but it never got to my desk. So I'll sure that up and know that next month I'll have a solid, solid number for you. But no, nothing reported to us at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mossa. I like that, hints and allegations. Alright, a couple of other, um, activities. The senior picnic is on May thirtieth at noon. And the retiree luncheon is gonna be June the fourth. Um, probably noonish as well. I didn't put a time on there.
Where will that be?
Um, I'm thinking I'm gonna see if we can do it at Oaks. I'm gonna talk to them tomorrow. Uh, we have four persons retiring, so.
That's a great idea. I'll just say, instead of standing in the lobby, recognizing people who have given thirty years of service to a school system. Exactly.
Yes.
Um, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Sorry.
Two ladies.
You saw me look up like, huh?
Behave. Well, you know, just because we're board members, we don't get a say in anything. We just. But, um, I'm glad to see this going back to a, just like the Cat's Whittle, um, going back to actually, actually recognizing the people that it's meant for, not to stand in a crowded room. Sorry.
Don't worry about that.
Okay, I'm off of that. So we'll move on personnel.
We'll do that executive session.
Alright, community engagement.
Alright, I just put, um, Mr. Mossa, Mr. Loader and I attended the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. And that was only one of, one of several meetings, I understand. So we, we will be going again. Um, so we have started that process. Um, I'm glad that we went and I'm glad that I stopped to check the map, because the map was wrong. It still had McIntosh Academy where McIntosh Middle School is, and there was no McIntosh Academy. And I was like, but didn't y'all just do this in two thousand eighteen and that school's been out there for twenty years? Anyway, I fixed them. I, I've told them where the schools are, so hopefully we're gonna be good on that next time. Um, but I just put the, if you wanna look at the agenda and if you wanna see the PowerPoint, I can send that to you as well. Uh, Y M C A, last week are all of our second graders finished their swim lessons. We had two sessions each day. So they have all been, um, taught to swim and Friday they got to have a fun day, I think, at the pool for a little while. And then, um, our partnership with Boys and Girls Club, um, they applied for two Twenty-first Century Grants. One for, the one we have now is K one-two. They applied for three, four, five, and then six, seven, eight. And we were awarded, or we haven't been officially told, but we think we got the six, seven, eight one. So we, um, several of us sat through a D O E interview last week, where we thought we were gonna answer questions and we did no talking. They did all the talking, so it was okay. Um, so they got the six, seven, eight, but the guy in charge, or our regional person, has encouraged, uh, Mr. Dohlin to apply again for the three, four, five one, when it comes out. So that's where we are with them.
Alright. So at this time, we'll go to executive session for personnel. No legal, Rich? Alright, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Hewlett. Second by Straggles. All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. We will return.
Yep.
Okay, alright. The board had adjourned to executive session to discuss personnel. Can I have a motion to return to open session? Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. McDonald, second by Mr. McIver. All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Any comments? Y'all talked about?
Well, yes, I do have a few comments.
Okay, come on.
I, I just want to, um.
We're sorry.
Go ahead, Sandy.
Go ahead.
I want to echo Dr. Williams's email today about Nurses Appreciation Week and tell Dr. Williams how much I appreciate her keeping up with all the appreciation for every position around here, because it's always an appreciation week and we certainly appreciate what you do very, very much.
Thank you.
And, um, I would also like to ask you all, and I'm sorry Ms. Tammy's not here, because I, I fully intended to thank her and I wanted her to know how very important. Y'all, life is short and life is very important. And when Ricky Boone's accident happened Friday.
Yeah.
Ms. Tammy's church, y'all would not believe the people in the parking lot at the Ellet Mall praying over that man, waiting on the helicopter. And there, there was so much prayer and you could feel it everywhere and that was such a horrible accident. And I, I know from this morning's report that he's tired now. He's, he's in so much pain. The pain, the medicine's not, the medicine's not helping, helping the pain. I mean, every rib.
Yeah.
C-six is fractured, collarbone's broken.
Yeah.
Lacerations, there's a pelvic crack, whatever. But, um, you know, it's, I, prayer's very powerful. And we are a small town and a small community and, um, we're very fortunate to live in a world right here with us that includes all these caring people. And I just wanna say thank you and please keep up him and your prayers.
And I will add this. I just got an update from Wanda. And not that this is, he would probably not be happy, but he was able to get up and go stand and use the restroom today.
Okay.
Just a few minutes ago.
Nice to be in a whole chest cavity breaks.
Yeah, I mean, so he's, he's fighting through it and they did take Aunt Dot to see him last night. His mom did get to go see him. It was hard on her, but she's, she feels a little better, cause she didn't think that, you know, she kept telling him they weren't telling her the truth. So she did get to go see him, so, but, but it's, there's a lot of prayers going up for him and, and they are working, so.
Yes, they are.
They are working.
Well, another thing, teacher appreciation week.
And teacher appreciation week, yes. I'm sorry, I got sidetracked, but.
No, no.
No, that's fine. We're celebrating them all week long.
Yes.
Awesome.
Alright, anything else? We're adjourned.